Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, it is six o'clock. Let's call the meeting to order.
Hi, I'm glad to be here. United States of America, we are a republic where we just stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Alrighty, before I do the roll call, there's a lot of new faces here. Thank you all for coming. I really do appreciate it. Just as a reminder, we do record council meetings now. I've got everything set up in the back. Everything is rolling, so it'll be available on YouTube later if you guys want to check that out or review it or what have you. So for those who haven't been here and didn't know, now you know. So on to roll call. Ms. Foriger.
Present.
Ms. Adler.
Present.
Ms. Schaefer.
Present.
And by telecommunication device, Mr. Fordice.
Present.
Campbell is absent this evening. Okay, on to number four, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Foriger.
Aye.
Adler.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
If it is approved, moving right along, on to number five. I got a little presentation here. The Iowa Foundation of Parks and Recreation check presentation to the city of Elkhart.
Yes, I thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. So I'm with the Iowa Foundation for Parks and Recreation. We are a nonprofit that supports all Iowa communities, but we have a mini grant program that supports communities of 10,000 or less. So Katie applied for our grant and was one of the 10 recipients this year to receive $1,000. This year, you guys are receiving it for the adjustable football and tennis court net system. So just want to say thank you guys for applying. Thank you.
Got some representatives here.
Yeah, we do.
A little more to the left, a little more to the left.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Brad, you'll get that joke later, so. On to number six, citizen hearing and other communications. We'll start as always with letter A, Polk County Sheriff. Lieutenant, how you doing?
Uh, let's see, for the month of March, we had 56 calls for service up Elkhart, various radar setups, traffic stops, burglary reports. Nothing really jumps out at me that happened, so.
Is there, you said burglaries, is there an uptick in those at all? Is it kind of consistent? I hate to say that.
Car burglars just around the county in general, yeah. Up here in Elkhart, not so much.
Anything that you said, I know you said nothing out of the ordinary, but anything that.
Nothing that we're helping help these, try to find these grass fires and ditch fires, so.
With the increased traffic coming to Elkhart from 210 area, have you seen any accidents? I mean, I haven't seen any, but that's mean there hasn't been any. Is there any penny?
No, no accidents or anything like that, but we've been setting up more in the White Oak area, monitoring that radar and you may see cars, especially during the afternoon, for us, the afternoon rush hour and the morning rush hours, centering by White Oak. But you check the speeds and stuff.
There you go. Council, any other questions?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Brad, did you have anything? Sorry.
No, sir.
Uh, on to Lib B, so Mr. Scott Drayor, fire chief.
Good evening.
Howdy.
Uh, 26 calls for service, 11 of them were fire, a lot of brush fires, uh, grass fires, 11 EMS calls, three rescue calls, and one hazmat for a total of 26 for the month. Um, a couple of weeks ago, five of our folks went up to Boone and spent all day Saturday and all day Sunday in a rescue class, and there was different breakout sessions, and they were able to choose what they wanted to attend. Um, green rescue was one of the choices, um, since we have a green rescue tube, some of them did that. We did some high angle rescue, and then just some general rescue using the jaws and various rescue tools that we carry. While it was somewhat centered and geared towards ag equipment, what they rapidly found was, what they were learning there was applicable to just about anything that we would do. It could be from vehicle accidents, um, to, we've had to rescue somebody out of this very water tower in the past. So it's never, um, it's never just ag specific. So kudos to those five folks for literally spending their entire weekend in Boone, attending, um, attending training. Um, this past Saturday, we had our Easter event up here in the park. Um, I'm gonna go with 100 plus kids because when you asked our, um, folks, I was not in attendance. Um, I never attend this event, but the folks who were there, there was anywhere between 80 and 200 kids, so I went with an average of 100, I guess. Apparently not all of our firemen count the same, but we think there was comfortably 100 plus kids. Um, we've been working pretty diligently over the last few weeks, uh, upgrading equipment, repairing things that are wrong. The next big, the next big project, I guess, we got two trucks that are still running incandescent light bars, and we can't get parts for them. We got rotators that no longer rotate, so they're stationary yours.
That's a tactic.
We're gonna be ordering new light bars to get those replaced. Um, just seems to me having properly functioning emergency lights is, uh, pretty paramount, so.
Seems, yeah.
We're gonna be working towards that slowly, but surely we are upgrading and repairing some of the stuff that was neglected over, over years. It's just been, been stagnating now as we, as we travel, so. I got Katie's message, um, for the city festival. We will be in attendance at that, just like we have been. Um, other than that, I don't think there's anything new.
Council questions, comments?
I don't have any big checks to give you, so I guess I'm.
Thank you, Mr. Drayor. Thank you as well, sir. Alright, on to letter C, uh, public comments, do a three minute limit. I'm gonna stick pretty close to this. I know I've been loose in the past, but we got a lot of folks here tonight, so just in case, we'll kind of stick close to another three minute limit, so. Any public comments? Anybody?
We need to address some things.
Yeah, if you wouldn't just mind just state who you are and your address and for the recording and let us know.
I'm Scott Todd, and this is for a couple of properties I own on 255 and 251 Northwest Elm. Uh, in December, I contacted the city about removing trees in front of those properties. Um, the response received from the city administrator Katie, uh, was that I had to prove that the trees are on their, on their, on their property, and that they are damaged, diseased, and dying, which according to code 150.06, the council is to inspect the trees, and furthermore, the city should know where the properties, where the city property is. Um, the city can clearly see these trees are on their property based on the GIS alone and based on the property boundary markers. Trees are on the city property. Um, I've had two tree service companies come out, arborists, that have given me the written documentation that these trees are damaged, dying, dead, and are a liability to our homes. Uh, one company said the next half of the tree that's gonna fall is gonna be on my house. Uh, and so many problems and frustrations could be avoided if the city administrator was well versed in this code. When you email me these codes, you need to read them first and make sure that you're like reading it, because when I, you know, looking at this, I've called, emailed, and now I've stated in this meeting the liability of the trees on the city property. If these trees damage my property, the city is now legally, legally required to reconcile that damage. Um, I just don't know how much more I have to keep proving stuff. Um, and it's just, I can read the code, uh, if, if, if you need me to read it, right here, it's 150.06, inspection and removal, the city shall inspect or cause to be inspected any trees or shrubs in the city reported or suspected to be dead, diseased, damaged, and such trees and shrubs shall be subject to the following: city property. If it is determined that any such condition exists on this public property, including the strip between the curb and the lot line of the property, which is where they are, the city council may, may cause such condition to be corrected by treatment or removal. The council may also order the tree removal of any trees on the streets of the city which interfere with the making of improvements or with travel thereon. And the private property is irrelevant because it's just on private property.
Right, being part of a public comment, obviously, we can't take direct action out of the city. Uh, I would have, I would have a question for you. Have you shared, you said you've had arborists come out. Have you shared any of the documentation with City Hall that you've received from these arborists?
I just got the documentation from them without having them out even. You can see these are dead, and they've been dying, and they've been crashing, and it's, obviously, in storms, we clean them up, but.
Sure.
And, I mean, I don't know how much, how much more I can do to prove it, you know?
I would think.
Not to mention all the other stuff that I've just.
I believe at this point, um, obviously, actually, we can't take action out of this evening, but if you would be so kind, is anything that you've received.
I'll bring it.
If you would forward that on to Katie, you're welcome to attach me on the email as well.
Yeah.
Uh, I would think, let's follow up with Public Works. Let's maybe get an arborist out as well, uh, from the city. Let's have it, let's, you know, get that opinion as well, not saying that your arborist isn't, isn't telling the truth, but.
Two companies, yeah.
Exactly.
And I just wanted, it was, I know that this isn't a place to resolve the issue, but I needed to have it on a public recording at this point because it's been so much denial.
No, I appreciate, yeah, anything that you have, if you'd send it our way, and then we will, we will look into an organ as well, and then, uh, yeah, just keep me in the loop as what's going on, Katie, you as well, Mr. Dodd.
Yeah, if you have any documentation, just send that over to me from the arborists.
No?
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
Yes, Megan Smith, I am 110 Northeast Cedar Lane. Um, I reached out because I initially emailed with Katie, the city administrator, on April 3rd. She said to come down here tonight. Um, did you say you sent out the email so they had it ahead of time?
Um, I let them know, yeah, what you were coming for.
Just because I have a lot of detailed information on there, but ultimately, I was asking, because code states the 5520, I believe, that, um, four animals total, no more than three of the same species, almost approved by councils, so that's why I was reaching out for chickens. Um, I did a lot of research, I've done a lot of research, so again, my email has a lot of information on it, things that I've done, researched, um, but ultimately, looking instead of three to have six is my ultimate ask for that, so. Any questions, ask me, but we're not getting roosters. I'm looking at fire trees. I've talked to my neighbors, um, and even like appeasing, uh, look wise, I'm gonna have my husband build a coop and paint it, make sure it's nice and not, uh, looks good altogether, so.
Council, is that something you'd like us to look further into and have on future agenda?
Yes, we, um, are gonna plan on trying to put that. I would like it on the May agenda. Uh, we had discussed previously readdressing that code because, uh, most cities don't mix household pets with chickens, so in the interest of trying to make that more streamlined with things, I would like to go ahead and get that on the agenda next month and see if we can make some changes to that. Thank you.
The code itself, the chicken code you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
It'd be, it'd be, it's like, if I remember correctly, it's our clip notes, I've got it grouped together as animals as a whole right now, but.
Yeah.
I agree with, with Ms. Schaefer's point, is, you know, they're all animals, but there's a difference between dogs and cats and chickens and goats and.
Yeah.
All other things, oh my, so.
Yes, thank you for all of your documentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. Any other public comments? Going once, going twice? Public comment session is now closed. Thank you both, appreciate it. You're welcome to stay, you're welcome to leave, whatever you, whatever you'd like to do.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
You don't see this many people, please stay. Have a great night. On to number seven, the consent agenda.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Like to pull one thing out if you don't mind, council, um, or at least make a note on it. Um, letter K, uh, the ECBC, special event application for the 2025 city festival. Um, obviously, it's been a long time standing thing. This is with our new special event ordinance that's gone into place recently. Um, I'm not picking on them, but just making example of, I make sure that we are kind of consistent across, not kind of consistent across the board as far as pre-advertising prior to approval of events. Granted, this has been a long time standing event. This is also a new ordinance that's in place, so I know it's, everybody's getting up to speed, but in sake of fairness across the board for all businesses, just make sure that we're reminding them that, you know, make sure we're, we're good to go on council's end before we set out flyers and all that good stuff.
Okay.
Well, no, I actually, I stand corrected. Didn't we say that that was okay, that they could?
Yeah.
My apologies, my apologies. I said that, and I was like, wait a minute, that doesn't sound right, so scratch that, I apologize. Um, but I did see that they're still waiting on some vendor lists, so the sooner they can get that to us, though, the better.
Yes, he's, he knows what he's gotta get all submitted still. It's just those vendors wait to the last minute, and that's with a lot of events in town, too.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
To sign up.
Again, I apologize. That was on the previous, or the first draft of the, hey, don't advertise, and not the, not the final, so my apologies on that. Alright, that was all I had for that. Um, everything else looked okay. If you guys are okay with it, we had the motion second, so we'll go down the line. Foriger.
Aye.
Adler.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
We're missing you for a second.
It's gonna go through the.
Should get all the way to it soon.
On to number eight, the ICAP policy presentation. Would this be you?
It would be me. I wonder how you get that, right?
Like, she's new.
I'm an out of counter, but not by far. Um, yes, good afternoon, good evening. You know, at 3 o'clock the other day, I answered my phone and I said, "Good morning." I didn't know it was 3 o'clock, and someone just laughed and laughed and laughed on the other end, and now I've done it again. Uh, I think I'm gonna blame the weather, the seasonal change. Um, I'm Megan Hurst with ICAP. Uh, we'll make this pretty pain free. We're pretty early. Um, Katie had given us your meeting date, and so you have your anniversary renewal in hand right now. Are you, are all familiar with ICAP? On some level, some level.
By no means an expert, but familiar.
That's okay. Uh, me neither. There, it's not random. Um, ICAP is a group self-insurance program for Iowa public entities, and so all we do is municipalities, we provide property and liability coverages. Um, roughly 800 members throughout the state, uh, 76 of the 99 counties, approximately 356. Um, and so we're, we're really proud of it. I can, you can knock me off my soapbox because I will get right on it. Um, I've been with the ICAP program for 17 years, um, and so, yeah, so I'm, I'm pretty passionate, you know, it makes it, I think it makes a difference, um, to be a member-owned pool versus, you know, standard industry. Um, and so we have, for years, provided the city's property and liability coverages. Um, so you have right here, this is what we call your, your anniversary packet. Pooling, the words are, if you've been around, you know it's a little bit different. Um, it's, it's your renewal essentially, and so your renewal date is June 3rd, so you have it here in front of you. Um, we do have some increases, exposure-based increases on a few different lines this year. So we sat with Katie. Poor Katie had to sit with us and work through a lot of updates. Um, the city has a few projects going on, your, your park, you had some new, you have a new pathway, you have some new lighting, you have some new memorial benches. Katie's given us a lot of that stuff, um, cylinders for, for fire, that's all included in this renewal. It's all been accounted for. Um, with that, you also have a couple of events. I just heard about a special event ordinance, I took a note on that, um, but you have a couple of events that are reflected in your, what we call GL, your general liability as well. Um, so yeah, so there is, like I said, some increase over last year. The increase for pool in terms of rate is 5% to 6% on the liability lines. There's no property rate increase, which is nothing short of a miracle in current climate. We all know that. I saw a tree split in my yard today, um, which means it was a product of the, the weather over the weekend, I'm sure, but, um, in any event, the rest of it is, is exposure-based, which means it's the things you're doing, the things you've purchased and added. I should also note, your new truck is reflected in this total as well. So yeah, so we do have, this is your, this, this page here is what we call your invoice. Um, we also have a few options on another page. Um, if you wanted to look at playing with what we call an alternate property deductible, there's no right and wrong, right? It's up to the city. It gives you a little bit of upfront savings. Of course, there's a trade-off for the additional risk, right? If you get, you know, if you suffer a loss, you get hit by, um, a small storm, something like that, then your, your upfront cost in those instances would go up. So it's just sort of almost like a hedging of risk, if you will. Yeah, I'll give you a moment to digest it, um, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Um, the other thing that I would wanna note, I know I just said I'll give you a moment to digest it. While you digest it, one more thing to note. Last year, you probably saw Casey talk about, um, some of you will have seen Casey talk about wind hail deductible. Does that ring a bell?
Basically.
Okay, this is standard stuff. Um, you, last year, ICAP implemented a 2% wind hail deductible. ICAP's deductible is really unique because it only applies if it's a cat event. So to be a cat event, it has to cause $25 million or more in damages across multiple insureds. Most industry providers, most coverage providers are gonna say, "Hey, if there's wind or hail, you're gonna pay 2%, 1%, 3%, whatever the provider has." We call that all occurrences. ICAP's is very unique because it is only in those catastrophic events. In the cat events, it is 2% on each covered unit of, unit of coverage, so your city hall, for instance, or a fire truck, but this year, and this is also unheard of, um, this year, you have what we call an out-of-pocket max. So if, you know, we don't, we hope it never happens, but if a devastating event comes through, a tornado or, you know, a derecho, as we all now have in our lexicon, um, if that comes through, you're subject to an out-of-pocket max, so it's always gonna be the lesser of 2% or the max, which is based on your insured value, your, what we call TIV. That total for you is $100,000. So if a tornado came through a derecho flat in the city, there's nothing left, the city pays $100,000, ICAP provides the rest of it, up to the, up to the blanket limit listed on your schedule, so you can see that on the back. So that is a special, I know that that's a lot of words to describe it. Um, we all have them. I've got one on my house, right? Most of us probably have them on our house at this point. The fact that it's cat-only in effect that it has that max, we're really proud of it. We're gonna tout it. We hope, we're gonna keep it, um, long-term, but right now, I want to make sure you're aware of it. Yeah. The other thing I just heard, and Katie, I don't know if you guys have used grant funds yet. I just heard the gentleman from the fire, so you can apply for that for use on those lights. We would definitely want those lights to be operational. It's $1,000. I'm, I'm happy to help you do that, but it's $1,000. You don't have to do anything. It's just a, a benefit, an annual benefit of membership in the program. So I'll follow up with you on that, but I heard it, and I went, my own sirens went off, you know? My own lights. But anyways, yeah, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. If you want us to look at, you know, playing with the deductible options and whatnot, we're happy to do that, too.
Council questions? Katie, then question?
Just trying to digest.
Yes. It's a lot to digest. Yep, so, and most people don't, and if you do, most people, like my husband's always like, no one wants to talk about it at the dinner table, right? I get it, I do get it. Um, I, I think, you know, we sat, like I said, with Katie, we went through a lot. Um, we spent, Katie had to spend a fair amount of time going through it. We looked at a lot of your contracts to make sure that the exposure is on the vendor or the third party and not pass through to the city. If ever you guys enter into contracts like that, you can flip them over to us. We're happy to look, and I'm gonna make sure that you're not on the hook. Um, that's something our underwriting team does. Um, but the other thing is, we work, you know, your values, valuations are hard, right? You, we get a lot of, a lot of entities that will ask, do we set our values or do you set your values? In all likelihood, these values are set whenever you became an ICAP member, and they've, they've been cost-adjusted over the years, which we've, I think that, now I'm biased, obviously, but we've done a really good job of trend, trending those with the market. You know, over the last five years, we all know values have skyrocketed, right? Um, ICAP is actually gonna do evaluations initiative, too, so it's a five-year endeavor over the, over the whole of the state, the whole quote book of business, if you will, for ICAP, the whole membership. Um, Elkhart, I believe you will be in year three, which means that in 2027, any buildings that the city has scheduled, any buildings you own that you have scheduled above $200,000, ICAP's gonna pay for you to have a professional appraisal on those, um, which is a pretty big benefit, because how do you know otherwise, right? You're, you're, we're all guessing, right? Um, but that's a pretty big benefit, but yeah.
Fordice, if you've got anything, jump in at any time.
Yeah. Oh, you know I would.
Oh, I know you would. I just wanna make sure the connection was still good at this point, so.
Katie, after your meeting with them, um, what are your feelings? I feel. Where do you think we should be at? I feel like we have a good, um, we have good coverage. Um, it's very standard with what other municipalities our size have. Um, you know, we brought all of our statement of values up to par, so I feel a lot better after doing that, just knowing that there are properties are, um, more accurately represented in that sense. So I feel good about it, our policy.
Do we know how long we've been with ICAP?
You know, it's funny, I was just trying to look, and because I'm looking at my phone, I just had an inkling I would get that question, I can find out. Um, I did look, I, I, it's, it's been, it's been some time. I do not remember exactly. Yeah. I will say, too, and I know we talked about this with the pond and the pier you have going in, um, and it's on my radar. Um, I don't wanna hound Katie with it, but we, you have access to a lot of what we call ancillary services through the pool as well, so knowing you have some of these big projects coming up, right, that you as a city are doing for your community, right, but we are gonna look at different things. Basically, I just scan everything and go danger, danger. My kids love it. Um, but we can bring out some of those, those risk control team members. There's no additional cost, it's just a benefit of the pool and kind of do almost like an onsite audit, right? They can look at some of what we call exposures, again. Um, they can walk your new path, they can look at the playgrounds, they can help evaluate when this pier goes in, is there anything you need to do to minimize liability to the city, and that's all, it's all built in, it's all part of your membership.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
You are welcome. Well, if you do have any questions, um, that follow up, which is not unusual, um, let me know. If I can leave you with one thing, I would say that on page, um,
I'm just looking because obviously, you know, we all work in cities, you have some, what we call excess liability options. It's this page with lots of numbers on it. If you wanna explore your options at the bottom of the page, you can. And I'm happy to answer questions after the fact, too.
Sure, this will be just like a phone call. As soon as we hang up and you walk out the door, we'll remember.
Oh, it's like, it's like when you leave the doctor, right? Do you have any questions? By the time you get to your car, you're like, shoot, I got a whole list.
My, my leg was hurting this whole.
No, I get it.
Well, we appreciate you coming out this morning.
See, now, right now, the, let the record reflect, right? I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, like, that was good.
Those chimes rubbing off on.
Her analogies would be a lot better than mine, though. Uh, let's see here, on to number nine, uh, reports from elected official city staff and standing or sitting committees. Mr. Fordice, we'll start with you and work our way around.
Um, nothing, uh, really major going on, just, as Scott had mentioned, reminder of, uh, you know, fires going on, uh, and grass fires this time of year. Did get a little rain, so that'll help a little bit, but, uh, big time of year for that. Plus also the storms, and so I'll try and remember to, uh, share any storm mornings on the Facebook page that I see or, uh, outlooks of the city coming up, so.
Excellent. Adler.
Um, Midwest Way's party did not meet this month. They canceled their meeting. I'm sorry, did not meet with them. The cemetery board doesn't meet till next month. Um, we did have a couple of conversations back and forth, the email in the last couple of days on the cemetery cleanup, um, and so we're working on that, maybe a better system for the future, just letting people know that, that they're coming out there.
Yeah, what, May 21st?
May 20th.
20th? Is it the cleanup day or the meeting?
It's the meeting.
I should specify.
So they, he, they had mentioned that they hadn't cleaned up yet, but it definitely looks like somebody was out there and cleaned up. I mean, there's no flowers on any of the, um, cemeteries on the ground, except for people that brought them this weekend, so. I am not sure if they did or didn't, but it looks to me that they have.
And do they have a Memorial Day event coming up, or am I mistaken on that?
They do. I don't have any details on that until the meeting, um, next month, and Katie will be there, and I'll be there, and I'll make sure everybody.
I believe they had, what was it, a Labor Day event or something last, last fall, I want to say, or?
We did Memorial Day and then, I don't, I don't remember a Labor Day event.
No, it's just Memorial.
They had done something, but the point I'm getting at is we'd love to, you know, promote that and maybe get some more folks to attend or.
That's probably when they were doing the live events and stuff.
So yeah.
We'll work on.
Oh, yes, excellent, excellent, so gently nudge, gently nudge.
Yes, yes, I was gently.
Awesome, Ms. Schaefer?
Parks also did not meet this month, and it's in Katie's report, but they're still working on the stuff for the pier. So we'll have that as soon as they've got it. Obviously, it was really exciting to get the grant, and yeah, that Parks team's really motivated to continue to do fun things. Moving forward, our puzzle event went great, and people really liked it and would like to see more things, so.
And the grant for the, the.
Yes, and the other grant for.
Security cameras.
Thank you, that one, also, is that on here somewhere?
I think it was in Katie's report. I included it in my report, yeah.
It's in one of your, one of your several updates and reports.
I won't take your thunder on that.
She was like, we'll scratch that.
Out of that one, no, you get that, you were tard on that. That's what I got.
Awesome, nothing really for me, happy to be here. Also not, although, also thrilled that I'm here because we should be planting right now. I'm holding Mr. Fordice in contempt of counsel because of the March meeting, he said it was going to rain and it did rain, so that's why I'm here. Yeah, so we will have a talk later, but no, happy to be here, nothing else for me, just as always, if you guys need anything from me, counsel, everybody, just give me a shout of anything I can help you with or jump in on, but that's about all I've got, so as soon as it dries up, we'll be back in the fields, so. Brad, Fordice?
Yeah.
Hi.
Howdy. Couple things, we met with the North Pole School Board, I understand there about Katie's, in Katie's report as well. Myself, Angie, Katie, and I'm a member of this school, is applying to the Elkhart of adjustments. It's also planning in zoning Travis Warren Key, then the school board to discuss a bunch of different things. One of those things that was mentioned was the desire of two, one of the existing board members who is rerunning, but there's three spots open. Two incumbents will be taking place, but one of those seats will be kind of open, the third person is seeking reelection. And it's their desire to have a strong candidate from Elkhart, or, you know, Alamoan, or not Polk City necessarily, but somebody else step up and want to take interest in that. So there will be a school board election this fall, there's three spots open, but specifically, one of that will be a new person. So hopefully, somebody from the community would like to be interested in that. If you have any questions, I can get anybody with existing school board members who'd be able to answer those questions. Otherwise, the information on apply is on the North Pole website. It's also, there's, there's county sites and various other ways to get that as well. But if you have questions, you can reach out to us at the city and we can help direct you to them as well, make that connection. We'd love to see somebody from Elkhart, and we, you know, hopefully, hopefully be willing to support that person if it's the right person. We also talked about the future location of schools, you know, most of it, you know, without boring anybody too much out of this population base, right? So continued that conversation, Travis Warren Key essentially volunteered to start working on some concepts for maybe from different schools, different cities, plotting them in different places in Elkhart that could be of interest. Obviously, 100% hypothetical right now, but to work with the school board as the population continues to come out this direction, obviously, Anquini is annexing north, we're beginning discussions, annex westerly, we're working with Travis Sisson, Landowner of West. Those conversations, emails were also sent, I believe it was two weeks ago, which is good, some, some tax figures and things like that. So those conversations that I spoke kind of landowners myself to help with that. So in conjunction with the school, obviously, economic development, industrial park development, those things are all ongoing. The progress is being made. Gas station, everybody's favorite subject, the updates that I have on that are pretty recent, just as of this afternoon. There is a local group that does small business administration loans, I can't remember the exact, it's like 504 or something. They're meeting with the developers tomorrow because they've, they've grabbed interest in the project as well. I'm still, what I've said this whole time, I'm anticipating that the gas station will be done before the agreement states that it'll be done, which is the end of the year. But there's no construction dates or anything, so hopefully, before next month's meeting, they'll make an announcement and then we can broadcast that announcement after they make it. I mentioned the annexation stuff to the west, don't need to go back over that. I think there was one more thing, let me look here at my notes. PZ did not meet as well, and I think that's what I had, unless there's any questions.
Counsel questions, staff questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Nope, thank you, sir. Mr. Campbell is not here this evening due to work commitments. He did send in an update, Katie, I don't know if you had planned reading that, but I'm stealing it from you regardless. I'm just going to read his bullet point list here, it's a very short list, but new public works truck has arrived, we heard about that a little bit earlier. The work in getting the truck, truck equipped with tuck boxes, I assume that's toolboxes, graphics, et cetera. Looking at some road repair on the west side of town. Public Works is also working on addressing a sinkhole on the east side of Grant where the culvert goes out of the street. Believe that's the one that's just south of Main Street, if I'm not mistaken, they were kind of looking at that last year. And then he agrees with Johnny's placement of traffic signs on all sides of town, which we'll get to that later under other business, so. That's all Mr. Campbell has.
Hey. Yeah, so a few highlights from this past month, the water treatment plant is still going well. They did some more pipe labeling in the last few weeks, the floors are done. They are marking out all of the tripping hazards in the facility, there's actually quite a few that are, they stick up, and so they're trying to figure out how to cover those up for the guys. They are also getting point of contacts for Ron and Rick for the weekend and off hours, so they have someone to contact in case of emergency. With the lift station, Allied Systems did put insulated covers on the pipe last month in March. They were having issues with one of the panels, they figured that system out, but they're still trying to schedule a time to exercise the generator with a load on it. And then a few outstanding items with the lift station still being surrounded, Kim communicated, they need to figure out the changes to control panel. Any of those changes should be marked up in the plans. We also need a checklist for the city for the guys when they went rise. And then also correct chattering on relays on the control side. The fishing pier, Jordan is working on a concept for that still. The Polk County Community Betterment Grant, we were awarded $10,000 for security cameras at Prairie Point Park. So I'm scheduling a time with the company's called Astra Security, they're out of Anquini. So I'm working with them and Huxley Communications to get those installed this summer, so that is exciting. We got our ARPA report all submitted to the government this week, so we are in compliance. Just an update on the legislation, planning to meet with our Senator and our House, House Representative, hopefully this week or next. Just to go over property tax reform, I don't know if you guys saw in my write-up that our financial advisor actually used us as an example at the state level, so that's kind of surreal. So that's why I think it's beneficial if I try to talk to them, try to, I know it'll be hard to take up their time, it'll be very limited, but can at least try, so.
That's awesome, instead of.
Yeah, they don't interplay to my emails, so that's great.
Instead of them saying small towns like, small towns like Clive and Grimes, we can talk like Elkhart and Maxwell and, yeah.
Yeah.
Actual smaller towns.
Yeah, so, do you guys have questions, anything else going on?
Not at this time. If you, is there on the calendar that you nailed that date when you're meeting with them or not yet, or?
No, I'm going to email them first and try to skip, I'm, I'm going to go to the capital because I'm sure it'll be hard to fit in time for them to travel.
Keep me in the loop as best as you can, and I'll see what weather permitting and everything, if, if possibly I'd like to attend.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
Deb?
So Marissa and I attended the IMFOA sessions and we learned about Iowa alcohol licensing, back the license portal. We listened to an attorney speak about labor laws, had training on being a notary, unclaimed property reporting, and we talked, we also listened to an attorney talk about open meeting laws, and each of us heard what it takes to become certified scroofs. So, yeah, it's pretty interesting and very informative.
Awesome, very good. Mike?
Good evening.
Howdy.
Planning and zoning did not meet this month, we have nothing new to report. So we're just waiting to see if something comes down the line sometime.
Excellent update, Mike, as always, thank you. We've already heard from Parks, I don't, is there anything else to add since your Parks representative? No, okay. Well, moving on then, on to number 10. A public hearing concerning fiscal year 2025 slash 2026 budget adoption, can I get a motion second to open the public hearing?
I motion to open the public hearing for like fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget adoption.
Fordice?
Hi.
Edler?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Fordice?
I'm meeting myself as a challenge sometimes, hi.
There we go. All right, the public hearing is now open. Are there any, before I go to you guys, is there any comments for or against?
I'll give a little spiel. So in your packets, you have the full Department of Management submission with our budget. So this budget cycle, it begins July 1 of this year, 2025, it ends June 30, 2026. And I just want to take a moment to thank Deb, Scott, Ron Cornwell, and Marissa. You know, they did a great job gathering data for me and as well as you guys for taking the time. I know it's, it can be a rigorous process in meetings and lots of numbers, so thank you guys for your help with that. So the fiscal 2026 budget, it's a balanced budget, our total revenues are $3,482,539. Our total expenses are $3,218,397. So this provides an under expenditure of $264,000. Our highest operating expense in our budget is public safety, so for fire and police protection, that's very common throughout the state of Iowa. Generally, cities always spend a good chunk of their budget on public safety. And then our highest revenue source is property taxes at, we're going to be taking in about $660,000 this next year. Our tax levy for fiscal year 2026 remains unchanged for the second year in a row at an aggregate levy of $11.60 per $1,000 of assessed value. I do want to note the average tax levy rate for Des Moines metro area cities from last year's data is currently $12.29. So that's based off of fiscal year 25. We were able to avoid raising utility rates and the tax levy by cutting portions of the proprietary budget, so water and sewer. We had to do that and allocate more salaries out of the general fund in order to follow the threshold that we have with our debt, debt capacity for water and sewer. So with our levy staying the same, we will be taking in about $23,000 in the general fund with our valuations. And then overall, we will be taking in about $46,929 for our overall increase to property taxes. And in effort to improve our city funds and build up reserves, we do not have any new city projects in the budget for this coming year. However, I want to note that budgets are forecasted and, are a forecast, and so they are subject to change if we need be. And that also means that because we budgeted for an item, doesn't mean we have to expend for it. I do want to note the fiscal year 2026 budget does provide us also the capability of hiring a third full-time public works position as well, if we need it. And then just wanted to note, 46% of your property, of the property tax dollars in Elkhart go towards the North Pole School District, and then 29% go to the city. 17% go to Polk County, and 8% go to DMAC and other agencies. So that's just a good overall figure for people to know that their property taxes aren't just going to the city. And if you want to look at an overview of the funds, there's breakdowns in your pie charts that are on the table, so. That was a quick overview.
Great, thank you.
Counsel, any questions, comments?
I like the pie charts a lot.
Visuals are always like a lot easier to understand rather than these huge packets of numbers.
And I would encourage anybody ever, and I appreciate that you brought up how the property taxes don't all come to the city, like most people, I don't think are super tax literate or city budget literate, like pop in, ask questions. Don't just make assumptions about where things are coming from or where things are going, because yeah, things like this, I think, make it a lot more clear. But it's sometimes hard to find that information on your own, so I just want to encourage people to, you know, come to City Hall, seek you out. We have all this information, like we've worked really hard not to raise things where we didn't need to, and, and I appreciate all the effort you've put into being as transparent about that as possible.
We're trying to improve the process and it's hard to learn, it's a hard subject to learn if you're just standing on the outside.
Sure.
So I would encourage anyone, if you have questions, to never be afraid to ask.
Do have requests, if we can get some more contrasting colors next time for those who are colorblind in attendance. The little lines pointing to each piece of the pie, that was great, so.
Are you colorblind?
Yes. Oh, no, I'm kidding, everything looks great.
It's only a common appearance in weddings, she's good.
That's a whole other subject. Goodness, all right, if there's nothing else, we will then, oh?
There's always something else, hi, Katie, thank you for all the work and for the input and Deb. Obviously, we talked about Chris and the rest of the staff as well. But when we, when we brought the new staff on a year ago, this was the goal, was to work through financial issues of the past, work through lack of communication, clarification of the past, and it really set the city in a good spot. And even a year ago, what we talked about was working towards building a budget where we didn't have to raise. Potential disastrous and, and really steep increases in other parts of the budget line, things like that. Knowing the work that went into that and knowing the challenges that the current legislation is bringing to you guys, because again, thank you for your diligence on this. The last thing I'll say is, is not undertaking any major projects in 2026 budget years is good for a lot of reasons, for, for reset purposes, for getting the audits done that we need to have, to getting the finances in order. Don't forget, you know, I don't forget to work, Katie, into cleaning up the banking accounts and making sure that we're making interest on this. So we do have, or you provide, it will be little thousands of dollars in extra revenue that you, you know, you and Deb have brought into the city through just doing that. We call it one simple thing, has been, has been a big change as well, and that's also, again, to maintain the tax rates and not increase things. And so the time and the money that you guys are investing into this from salary to, to just your time every day at work is more than returning itself from grants that you're getting awarded to the city, to the overall satisfaction of the city staff, is, it does not go unnoticed. While we're not perfect, you know, there's challenges, people have questions, we're, we're being tasked with looking into different things, code enforcement's not always a popular subject. You've gone out of your way, both of you, Sue does there, I heard your voice earlier, you guys go out of your way every single day. It's true that the city is in a bad spot today, then it was. Wish I was there to say it personally, so thank you.
Thank you, and thank you guys as well for all your support and showing up every day.
My apologies for almost cutting you off there, Fordice, you're not here so I can see your body language of, hey, I want to say something, so no, thank you for your time.
Start talking and you'll have to hit it a few hundred shots.
That'll work. That'll work, so, no, if there's nothing else, else? No, okay, just delayed response, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and then we'll move on to letter A, so motion second, close public hearing.
Move that we close the public hearing on the 2025, 2026, but the option.
Oh, hey. Fordice?
Hi.
Edler?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Fordice? Public hearing is now closed, 6:49, we'll move on to 10A. Public hearing is now closed, 6:49. We'll move on to 10A, resolution 2025 dash 23. Resolution approving the city of Elkhart's annual budget for fiscal year 2025 to 2026.
Motion to approve resolution 2025, 23.
Second.
I give it, I give it to Schaefer. Four Acre?
Aye.
Adler?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Four Dice?
Aye.
Approved. On to number 11, resolution 2025 dash 24, a resolution setting a time and place for public hearing for the purpose of soliciting written and oral comments on the city of Elkhart's proposed amendment number one to fiscal year 2024 to 2025 budget. That's a my fault.
Yes, so we're just setting the date for the, the next regular city council meeting, May 19th. Uh, to hold a public hearing to amend the current budget. We are only going over in transfers because we've, Deb's been doing a lot of work in making sure we can improve funds here and there in deficits. And so, uh, it will, we will go over in transfers. So that's what it's.
Okay. So we need a motion in a second then to approve the, uh, date of May 19th, 6pm, uh, at the community center for number 11. You, you get what I'm going at here.
Move to, uh, uh, approve resolution 2025 dash 24, a resolution setting time and place for public hearing for the purpose of soliciting written and oral communication on the, or oral comments on the city of Elkhart's proposed amendment number one for fiscal year 24, 25 budget to May 19th at 6pm.
Where at? This here building?
Second.
Four Acre?
Aye.
Adler?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Four Dice?
Was I maybe out this day after?
Alrighty. On to number 12, resolution 2025 dash 25, a resolution to authorize the transfer of funds for the city of Elkhart, Iowa.
Okay. Deb did, um, some work for us and she looked at our treasures report, looked at all of our funds and identified, identified, um, some areas where we could move some money around to improve our deficits. Um, so there was a handout that we provided in your packets, uh, that just kind of shows where we would be moving them to and the reason. Uh, do you guys have any questions on them? We did verify with our CPA just to make sure that what we were doing was okay. So.
Always a wise thing to do.
Very nice. Good job, Deb.
Just to say, again, I just appreciate the transparency.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, I didn't have anything. Four Dice, do you?
Two questions.
Since you had the delayed one, there we go. Joe, Rob, that ended. Okay, so take it away then.
Motion to approve resolution 2025 dash 25, offers the transfer of funds.
Second.
Four Acre?
Aye.
Adler?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Four Dice?
Aye.
Aye. Alrighty, on to number 13, Board of Adjustment Appointments. We had two spots and wouldn't you know it, we had two candidates. So I'm bad at math, but that's probably going to work out okay. Now, it is up to council ultimately, but, um, I know Mr. Warren Key was not able to be here this evening. I would assume for work or other commitments, what have you. Um, did we have any questions about his application or?
He's just submitting to.
Correct, correct.
It's great, isn't it?
Correct.
Nope, if nothing, then motion in a second to approve Travis Warren Key's resubmital, resubmission for reapplication for the, he wants to do it again.
Re-election.
Yeah, reelection.
Reappointment?
Reappointment. I knew there was a fancy word there somewhere.
Motion to approve, uh, the reappointment of Travis Warren Key to the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Four Acre?
Adler?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Four Dice?
Aye.
And our second applicant is in attendance this evening. Um. I miss Stephanie Jinks, I believe. Um, we all. I'm going to stop there because conflict of interest and all that stuff, but, um, did you want to say anything other than what you submitted or?
No. Everyone knows me, so if you have questions, ask.
The letter was great.
Thank you.
Staff, any questions for you guys? I guess I should ask for Travis, it's a little late now, but.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, then. Counsel, uh, motion second to approve Ms. Jinks to the Board of Adjustments to fill the vacancy for the, the person that will be running.
I was giving him a chance. Motion to approve the appointment of Stephanie Jinks to the Board of Adjustments.
So.
Four Acre?
Aye.
Adler?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Four Dice?
Aye.
Welcome aboard. Alrighty. Uh, on to number 14, uh, noise ordinance, uh, letter A, uh, ordinance number 2025 dash two, or no, dash three, excuse me. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Elkhart, Iowa by adding chapter 53, noise control. This would be the first reading of the ordinance. Um, it's in here somewhere. There it is. From what I gather, this is just making it more defined as opposed to not?
We don't have a noise ordinance right now.
Okay.
Um. Uh, I was informed that the Polk County can't enforce their ordinance within our city limits. So it makes, uh, it would make sense for us to adopt our own.
Correct.
Um, I don't know if you had any input on the code, uh, that I sent over, the noise ordinance?
Yeah, it's, uh, I got it, what, about mid Friday afternoon. Uh, I was kind of busy this weekend, so I, I did have a chance to look it over for a couple hours before the meeting. I didn't see anything that jumped out that I would change or make amendments to. It's, uh, kind of the basics along what we have with our ordinance, so out in the unincorporated areas. We get a complaint, we come up and address it. Um, we always try to work with the people, like, hey, we've just got a complaint of whatever it is. We need you to, you know, say turn off music or, uh, to shut off your lawnmower at 10:00 or 8:00 at night or, you know, whatever it is, you know?
Why'd you look at me when you said that?
Um, you know, you'd be amazed. It's, uh, the school needs to get, uh, creepy as snow on the ground and somebody's out at 5:00 in the morning trying to get to work, snowblown, uh. Makes sense to me, but, uh, we do get those complaints. Uh, but like I said, we come up, we try to, uh, work with people and stuff. We have our little sound meter that we bring up. Make sure everybody's abide by the rules and get along and all that. But looking it over, I didn't see anything that jumped out at me with this one.
Thank you for reviewing.
Counsel, questions, comments?
It was very wordy.
Well, as is most things in government, as I've come to learn and love. Um.
But I don't know how I'd cut it down at all because I really wanted it to be less wordy somehow, but everything that was in there made sense. Um, the only thing. Number seven, I just. Everything else is so specific. That's why it's like, this is chainsaws, this is construction, this is an engine, um, that injurious or disturbing sounds generally. I just don't know, based on everything else on that list, what that might be. Again, that doesn't mean we have to get rid of it out of there. It was just, everything else is so specific. And so then to throw that we're generally behind this, just sound like, open the door to my neighbor is making a sound I don't like. It's a random sound.
So maybe you take out the injurious or disturbing sounds generally, that entire phrase and just start it?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like it, everything else is covered. I could not come up with what that would be that isn't covered somewhere else.
Something else.
And so just eliminating that little bit of ambiguity out of there.
Okay.
That was my only suggestion.
I'll be sure I keep number five to a respectable level when I come into town. That'd be the engine brake noise for those who don't have the list.
Oh, there was, oh, wait a minute. There was one other thing. Um, why, do you know why the alarm testing timing is different than the timing for everything else?
Um, I think that's just more of like, if it's going on all day long, it kind of is a disturbance. I mean, if someone's like car alarm is going on all day and someone's trying to work or something.
I would hope at some point somebody would check and make sure it's like a legit thing that is going off or versus just by accident, but.
Yeah. But that's what I kind of interpreted that as. So do you guys, are you all on board with removing that number seven?
Yeah.
Generally, injurious sounds.
Let the record show, four dice, that Rob kind of shrugged and said, sure.
Yeah, I'm fine with removing it. It doesn't, it's, it's not very specific. The question that we get a lot of these times when we look at these ordinances is who's going to enforce it and how will it be enforced? And we need to put that in the ordinance at all, Katie, or what your, what your direction would be on that?
Okay.
Yeah, I, now that you bring that up, I would agree.
Is that like a warning or like fine system or is that just?
Like, it's enforceable? Or is this something that, in that contracts approved for a code enforcement officer? Is this something where the complainant calls City Hall and City Hall contacts the county sheriff's not urgency number?
What's the, what's the float chart?
If you need to, the ordinance is just a.
Could figure that out, yeah.
That wouldn't be a bad idea probably to have tossed in there and.
Okay.
I would imagine at the end of the day, it's ultimately, it would all be, ultimately be Polk County would be.
My assumption was it was Polk County.
Enforcing if it was a continued thing, but we don't want to go on the assumption of, you know, cause I'm not going out there at 11 o'clock at night in my slippers, so it's not happening.
I will say the majority of the other ones that we have, say, one ran or whatever, they, they include us in enforcing that order, the code enforcement officer.
Okay.
So it kind of covers the whole thing.
So I'll add some verbiage, just if that's all right, I have Polk County in that.
Hey, counsel, it's up to you. I'd be, I'd be fine with, with both, if she, if, when we, when we make it official and bring somebody on board, if they were in town, happened to hear, I'd be okay with that. Yeah, it's up to you guys though.
Okay. Okay, I will make those changes and put it on the next agenda.
Okay. So then we will technically table that for now. Yes, so. Tableing number 14. Uh, which leads us into number 15, code enforcement. Uh, letter A, resolution 2025 dash 26, a resolution to approve the city of Elkhart entering into an agreement with Iowa code enforcement. Did we have any other additional spiel's or comments or conversations or?
Welcome again.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice to see everybody.
Um, no, I mean, in that memo that I sent out, it kind of defines, you know, all the references came back positive and, um, Harrison's been great to work with so far. And unless there's specific questions that we need to address, I don't have anything to add.
You were cool with all the changes and stuff.
Yeah, completely. So it's pretty much what all of other cities have similar, so. Four Dice, anything from you?
I just, for, just to get it out, kind of how this process is going to work, Katie and Harrison, um, what, uh, what was kind of the final, just to get it out on a piece of paper and talk about it a little bit. What is the process going to be? We've talked in the past about the letter, we've talked in the past, maybe we'll, maybe the letters will be the city hall first reviewed or uh, maybe a phone call will come to City Hall before the letters get sent out. Have you guys kind of ironed out what the first wave of code enforcement is going to look like as part of this agreement or are we staying on that just as?
Personally, I would suggest, uh, all city staff and city buildings probably go over those first. Um, and then the other forms of problems that people have complaint basis, go over those. Um, would be the first ones that normally come up for the cities that I've worked with. Um, and then after that, normally we just, all right, I guess going from notice wise, we send out the first notice, but I go through and I'll take pictures. Um, I'll put it on Google Sheets, everybody, or I guess, uh, city clerk and everybody else can see that, um, who has access to it. And then from there, then if you guys have questions or concerns, leave it on there for a couple days and then we'll send letters out after that. It'll be the first notice and then wait 21 days, then I'll come back out. Normally it's about two weeks later, send out the second notice. And then seven days, normally it's come out, two days or two weeks after that as well, but.
And you're, you're good working through some of the previous amendments or agreements in place if we're not sending? Re-choosing letters and things of that nature?
Yeah, I have absolutely no problem with that. Uh, I prefer to have pictures of my own, um, if you guys.
Of course, yeah. And you just need to get it right from previous, you'd have to start. And is everybody on council okay with that kind of being the plan for July 1? As far as the wider code enforcement goes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. It would be reaching out.
Some questions?
Jumping in here really quick, Brad, it'd be my desire to, I know you said we, uh, do the assessment, then it comes to the review and then the first notice goes out. Uh, before any secondary notice, I would stay, since this is kind of a, it, it's not a new thing, but it's a, a lot of people are going to think it's a new thing. I would say maybe we delay that second notice a little bit longer until people are kind of more used to it, up to speed, on board, whatever phrasing we want to use here. That way we don't look like we're just trying to, you know, drop kick notices and everything. So, um, it's, it's something, something that's for all intents and purposes, relaunching, it's always been there, but it's relaunching, but I don't want it to make it seem like we're coming in and then being bullies about it. So that would be my desire. It's ultimately up to you all, but that's just my, my opinions and my thoughts on it, so.
I think what could precede that, that between now and June would be some type of, uh, I mean, a Facebook post, something of that nature, um, Harrison, picture of the vehicle these guys drive. You see this person taking pictures, they're the city's new code enforcement officers, assuming the contract is approved. Uh, here's what you can come to expect. Here's the purpose of it, again, briefly. Uh, maybe like almost like a walk letter to some, uh, walk letter to for Harrison, but also just a reintroduction letter to the whole system. Katie, I'm sure that would be new, but if it's possible.
Let's take, let's take all that, let's put it on our website. And then I had mentioned, and I just, I hadn't gotten to it, I apologize, but getting a, getting a physical mailer out there, uh, in form of like a postcard.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, me, everybody else or whatever we need to, for that, we, we talked about that two months ago. This would be a time to get that together and get that sent out.
But have a, have a link on. Have a link on there slash have a QR code where folks can scan it with their, with their phones or, hey, here's how you go to it on the website so they can then see every, all the information. Here's where everything is. It's not just word of mouth or Facebook posts for those who say that Facebook posts isn't sufficient, which I agree, but, um, that way it's, it's there, we present it, so.
Maybe make it fun, like, this is Harrison. Did you know? It's creepy, like, I'm shot and like, this guy's moving around.
I, I always, if, I ha- I'll have my window down when I'm clean and if somebody's there, like, what are you doing? I'll wave and I'll say what I'm doing and talk to them, but I have no problem talking to people, so.
Perhaps Mr. Four Dice, he could be on, on one of the pilot episodes of Between Two Ponds. I'll tell you about it later.
Sounds like a terrible idea.
Spinoff, two pines.
Nice.
So.
So when do you want that mailer sent out? May?
I would, I would say, yeah, let's sometime in May and I'll help you work, work with it, work on it, um. Uh, get some ideas and maybe some pricing and whatnot and then work with Marissa as well to see what, what do we need to do city side to then get all the addresses stamped on it or printed off or, or what, what all goes into that. I'm not sure what we, what we have, what we do, how that all works, but.
Okay.
You know, if it's something that I can, you know, get, pull, pull together, we get a link on the website, take a QR code from it and I could put that on there and I'd be happy to take, take a big lead in that project, so.
We'll get it figured out.
If not, I know somebody who's great at, you know, designing postcards and stuff, so. Okay, um, if there's no other questions, comments or anything, then motion to approve, uh, 15A?
Motion to approve resolution 2025 dash 26, was motion to approve the city of Elkhart entering into an agreement with Iowa code enforcement.
Four Acre, got it? Four Acre?
Aye.
Adler?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Four Dice? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, you're welcome to stay and hang out, you're welcome to take off. Cool, glad to have you. Uh, on to number sixteen, uh, conversation residential tax abatements. We talked about it a little bit last month, it's been brought up in the past a little bit. Um, what else do we need to talk about or discuss or where's, has, has anything changed?
Um, we talked about doing away with the abatements, which I'm fine with, um, I did notice somewhere that there was a new tax abatement, so is the plan that we'll just keep approving them until we like have filed everything to stop them, is that?
Yeah, we'll have to amend your ordinance and it requires hearings and stuff, so it won't be official until we pass the ordinance.
Okay.
What, what's going to be the course of action, forgive me if this is a dumb question, but what's gonna be the course of action for those who um, I'm just using Mr. Vanski as an example, cause he's here, that had a tax abatement available to him, was not aware of it when it went for the, to apply for it, two years after the fact? Would that still be then in standing or is that no longer valid since we've removed them? How would that work?
Once it's approved by council, it's set in stone.
Okay.
For county.
Okay. I just didn't know.
This is future, future, future ones.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if that's kind of backdated as far as, hey, it was available in twenty-two, I just found out about it, but yes, you've changed it, but is that still applicable to me because X was? I'm just, I'm just clarifying to make sure I fully understand it.
Yeah.
The conversation I would just continue is we, we would need to set an ending, in case you mentioned hearing to change the ordinance, so would that be able to take place? To get that, if the council decided to, to vote to end that?
I'm pretty sure it's a two meeting process, cause I think we have to pass a resolution to set the hearing.
Okay, then I would be in favor of beginning the process of discontinuing the residential tax abatements, um. It sounds like it would be July, it sounds like any house ordinance could be early in July. May and June to do it.
Okay. So starting July.
Anybody else thought something mattered?
No, I think you're fine.
We're getting a lot of head nods in agreement, so.
And, and, and to recite the impact it has, you know, with looking at budgets, right? We, we saw our taxable valuation go from twenty-six percent or forty percent or up down to eight or two because taxes. With all the legislation changes in general, city, um. The original intent, the tax abatement was to go up and the first class described in city according to the last state. Um, and there was no spike in those years. It was organic, you know? Those abatements had. Just to the point now where we can say, moving forward, I'd rather experiment without it, see how that goes, uh, and rediscover that in the future as a secondary conversation. Once Travis gets things planned, we'll be in the market, we're starting to do agreements to, to potentially conversation as well, uh, that structure looks like, especially with all the tithes and sheers and things coming up. That's a broader conversation for a different time, this is more residential.
Very good. All right, if there's nothing else, then we'll move on.
I'll get the next step on the May agenda then.
Excellent.
Agreed.
Okay, uh, moving on to number seventeen, uh, any other business other than the attachments that are on here for discussion? The other, other business? Well, uh, we had some attachments on here as far as, um, potential looking into purchasing, pursuing, uh, some of the digital speed signs coming into town. Um, I'm sure you guys have all looked through the, um, I don't think anybody's, has really changed on it, but it's more so actually getting this in motion and, or looking to get it in motion, but comments or concerns or questions or?
Budgeted money to do this?
Yeah, um.
You guys, I didn't notice if that was mentioned in there or not.
No, we haven't spent any money on signs yet this year.
Okay, so about how much do we budget for that?
About two thousand a year, um, but the public works fund, we were just looking at it the other day and there, it's.
They're pretty expensive, we could do like one to start with.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not suggesting we go and buy seventeen of these things, but.
Yeah, I was just curious.
We don't have that many streets, but.
One per, one per stop sign.
Yeah, do like one and see how it goes and.
And, and to, and to be specific, it's like the flashing your speed is, I, I do like the flashing stop signs, maybe that's something we look at in the future, that areas that are known to have issues, if there continue to be issues, so. Um, I'll look to you lieutenant, what are your thoughts or opinions or concerns or, or plus signs as far as having these, the entering into town, the splashing speed signs, do you think they make a difference, do you think that they're just there for aesthetics? Do you like them from the law enforcement side of things, hate them? No comment?
Yeah, that'd probably be the smart way to go. I, I think they give, uh, that sense of security to the family or the, the community, you know, they come into, into town and see that, um. Some people may be like, oh geez, you know, maybe my speedometer's off and slow down a little bit. Honestly, others just blow right through them. You know, high score.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're following each other and their school or whatever, but, uh. You know, Al, Almen just put two in over there by the high school. The other, they, they deter, they help, uh, you know, I mean, we're still up there doing our job and trying to slow everybody down the best we can.
Personally, I think they do help a little bit, I mean, I noticed the ones in Almen, you know, that I'm slowing down when I'm seeing it flashing and not realizing how fast I'm actually going, so.
I think the ones that do the, the blue and red lights, you know, simulate the, the law enforcement lights, uh, I think those catch people's attention a little faster, so they're not sure if they're getting a citation or or something, and they'll from that.
Right.
Other than just the, you know, like the ones that may put a frowny face out there.
I was just gonna say, I do like the ones in Slater, granted it's Story County, but in Slater it comes through and if you're like twenty-four or less, it gives you a smiley face, so.
Wow, oh, never seen that.
It makes you feel good.
Well, and to your point, I think I like the idea, um, of starting with coming into town here to avoid the high score issue, is.
High score followed by the newly reforming speed limit, so.
High score, let's see where you end up.
Uh, just to note that they are only two digits, so that's, that's all I'll say, but. Uh, no, if you guys are okay with it and we've got, we've got funds and if we don't, obviously then we, we don't, but um, if we, we start with one and kind of go there and um, are you guys in agreement with the notes I've got in here as far as where they go first, when I, when they do come in or? Did you have that, do you have that note, Rob, or? I can read them off to you if you don't have it handy.
Oh, um, I, she had, Katie had included in here, um, my thoughts were going in order, um. If we got, if we buy one at a time or like one a year or what have you, uh, start at the west side of town over here, facing east as you come through. Then if, when we change the speed limit on forty-sixth or, um, forty-sixth farther down coming into town, um, potentially we even move it at some point or we just adjust the speed threshold on it. Um, from forty-five to, to thirty through there, uh, and then on the north coming into town from the south from White Oak and then from the south coming up into, into town. And obviously we reevaluate as we go and if we need to throw a traffic study in there or a survey or whatever, let's, let's do it, I'm all for it, so.
I, I would suggest as we develop anything west, um, including the road, you know, you just mentioned coming down from White Oak, that we work with Travis and, and see as part of maybe the development of that area, we could have those signs placed by the developers.
Yeah.
Uh, in those areas to defray the cost for the city or further cost from the city to the developers is just the part of the, uh, build out of that, I think would be intelligent, if we want signs out there, that might be the way to do it. Same with coming into town from the north, um, um, past the daycare, you know, as those houses get built out there. I, I don't think it would be too tall and ask to go back to the developers and ask them to, uh, donate those, you know, maybe one of those signs to the city for the area as well that are out there that they're trying to sell.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Counsel, anything else? Any other, other, other business?
So are we deciding on purchasing one?
Yeah, I think if we have the money for, uh, for one, then we start with one and we see what happens.
The twelve inch or the eighteen?
The twelve is fine.
Okay. Sounds good.
Brad, did you have an opinion twelve versus eighteen?
No, I think whichever one makes the most sense and my, my question is gonna be for a funding thing, Katie. If this is possible or not, is it, is it something we could pull some of that interest money that we're making from moving our bank accounts to those higher interest accounts, cause it was money we didn't have after then coming in this year? Is it something we could spend that on or does this have to come from a specific fund that was earmarked for red signs and street repair and things of that nature?
It would come from the public works fund, but we have been very conservative with spending out of that this year, where it would be fine to spend it out of that.
Yeah, as long as it fits in the priorities, you know, there's a single, uh, there's some streets that have some issues that look like they might need to be budgeted or put back into place and there are some things on six, so as long as it doesn't take away from any of that, it'd be fine with pulling that out of there, that'd be, I'm okay with that.
I would respectfully counter the twelve inch sign as I'm, one, my personal opinion and two, as I'm seeing from the audience. Just for reference, this is an eight and a half by eleven piece of paper. So one more inch taller and that's the size of our sign, give or take the width as well. I would recommend the eighteen. But that's just me.
It's a price difference, I don't have a problem.
No, I.
But it is about fifteen hundred dollars difference.
It's not just a bigger sign, it is a little bit it has more information on it as well.
Correct.
But it doesn't do anything different, correct?
It says your speed slowed down, according to what I'm looking at, or the eighteen inch digits, so. Versus the twelve inch, so it's just easier to see from another way, that's really all it is. It looks exactly the same on it. We did not, the speed check fifteen inch one is the one that's on it, um, like the lieutenant was speaking about. The twelve inch one doesn't appear in the document, they're pretty small, I think Almen has a just looking at these pictures, I think he has the twelve inch ones, these are bigger than that. That's just basing on what I'm seeing on this picture.
So there's a fifteen, there's a twelve, fifteen and eighteen?
No, there's a, there's a, looks like a fifteen and eighteen, I'm not seeing where the twelve is.
We maybe do it, maybe do a fifteen.
Well, that was what the discussion was, was it fifteen, I think it was just mislabeled, it's fifteen the whole time.
So there's a, so there, there's two, there's speed check fifteen and speed check eighteen. Speed check fifteen is, looks like you've got two options, your speed in bigger letters, which overall sign size is forty-two by thirty. Or the your speed only in the smaller letters is thirty by thirty. Then we upgraded the speed check eighteen, which is same thing, bigger sign, bigger. I, I guess, how much, how much attention are we, are we wanting, Brad, I mean?
Well, eighteen inch signs do speeds over forty-five and the uh, cause it's set at forty-five, the smaller ones are for speeds under forty-five, you read that as well. So really what I would suggest is we approve whether or not we want to get one and then, um, get the amount figured out, figure out what funding source it comes from and then let's, let's get it, get it submitted next month. Then we have time to look at all the options and make sure we know what we're getting, unless everybody else knows what they want right now.
No, I feel better about that.
If I want it, we have the information.
Yep, cause as I go through the time, looking at some stuff that I had overlooked and misread, so let's all.
Yeah, there's a lot of different options.
Yeah, so let's all make sure we're double, we double check on that, myself included, then we come with our, hey, what do we want? We're, we're all in agreement, we want something, but as far as which one do we want, what, what model do we want, what trim package?
This is also, I know Campbell's pet projects, I'll be curious to see.
Yeah.
What his opinion?
Let's see what Brad thinks, um, there wasn't any that had self-defying spike strips, so. Kind of hoping for that myself, but I didn't see any.
You gotta chalk a lot of lieutenant, I'll take it.
That's what I was going for, uh, but I'm just not there to see it.
Oh.
Looks like the numbers were the same size, speed check fifteen, fifteen inch digits for speeds less than forty-five, speed check eighteen, eighteen inch digits for speeds greater than forty-five.
Okay, so then, yeah, that, that answers our question. Let's, let's stick same plan though, let's get it, let's get on next month, let's, we know we want it, but let's get it official on next month, we pick which one we want for sure and then go from there.
Yes.
The weeds on all that.
In the meantime, we'll also talk with Campbell and, you know, with the festival coming up, if he's bringing the helicopter, maybe we get some speeds enforced by aircraft signs and. No, yes? Yes, moving on though, um, thank you all for that. Uh, on to number eighteen, uh, get closed session pursuant to Iowa code, chapter twenty-one dot five, letter C, to discuss strategy with legal counsel and matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent and where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the government. Uh, it is, what time is it here, double check here, it's seven twenty-five. So I need a motion and a second to enter the closed session, please.
Can I move that we enter into the closed session?
Fordice?
Hi.
Edler?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Fordice?
Yeah, aye.
Seven twenty-five, council is now in a closed session, if you are not invited as part of the closed session, please make way in an orderly fashion to the door. Uh, if Mr. Penasdo, you needed anything from us or whatever, we shouldn't take too long, so.
Yeah, I was just thinking around if anybody had to be on the.
No, greatly do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then council will just figure in for, I'll do exactly what I did last time, the recording is still going, I'll make the post edits, I'll splice it, dice it and then get it into our top super secret file where it needs to sit. Okay, time is now seven forty-one, uh, need a motion, second, uh, seven forty-two, might make that motion second to exit the closed session.
Motion to exit the closed session.
Second.
Four Acre?
Aye.
Edler?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
We're now out of closed session, back into regular meeting, brings us to everybody's favorite, number nineteen at seven forty-two.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Four Acre?
Aye.
Edler?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Fordice? All right, thank you all.